Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
The Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District Reorganization Meeting to Order. At this time, I'd like to consider any adjustments or amendments to the agenda. Anybody? The only one I have, I do have one, is I'd like to add. We need to authorize the addition of Helen to the accounts and remove Liz. So I'll be asking for that and putting that on the agenda.
All right. And do we have anything on from Teresa? Are we all good with the?
Say that again.
Did you have an authorization to borrow or any changes Teresa to what we have here? Oh, no, it's here, 7A is here. Never mind.
Any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, communication and public comments.
Chris, this is Cheryl. I think you just jumped over reviewing and approving the board minutes. I don't know if that was intentional.
No, it wasn't. Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate that. Just gotta wait. My screen's doing a little something right now. I just have to adjust it. Okay, so review and approve board minutes from June 18th, 2020. Do I have a motion to review and approve the board minute?
You do.
Jack Breyer. Anyone else? Do I have a second?
I'll second. Lynn?
Thank you, Lynn. A. Approved and seconded. All in favor of approving the board minute for June 18th?
I've got a, Chris, this is Cheryl. I do have a correction in the request. It's simply under new business budget and ballot questions. It's a small thing, but Jack updated the board on the upcoming vote. It says on July 25 and the date should be corrected to read June 25. And that's the only correction I have to the minutes.
Thank you. Any other corrections? Okay, if not, I'll go through one by one to approve the minutes. Lynn?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes. Aye.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes.
Okay, minutes have been approved. Communication from the public and comments from the public. I do not see anything in the chat at this time. I'll keep an eye on that. Okay, reorganization of the board. What I'm going to do first, if you look on the agenda, I'm going to change, adjust the the order of this. Because we can't adopt Robert Rules of Order until I elect a chairperson. So this time I would like to have nominations for chairperson of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. Do I have any nominations?
This is Cheryl. I nominate Jack Breyer.
Thank you. Any other, do I have a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
Do I have any other nominations? Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the nominations. And all in favor of Jack Breyer continuing as board chair for the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. Lynn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Think I got everybody. Okay. It has been approved. Jack, you are, continue your, if you accept, to continue your role as chair of the school board.
I will agree to serve out my sentence. So yes.
Okay, then I condemn you to.
All right. The next item up here is what was 5A and is now 5B, which is the adoption of Robert's Rules. And I would like with the board's indulgence to amend that, to adopt the Robert's Rules for Small Boards, because we only have six members. The major difference is a slightly more informal in terms of being able to speak, not having to speak to the chair, and also that motions will not need a second. Those are the big items in the difference between the two. But I would move that we, actually, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards.
I make a, what's that word I'm looking for?
Robert's, you moved to adopt Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
That's what I heard you say. I will need a second for this because we're still operating on, and I see Jessa doing that. Do we have any, do we have any discussion of this item? Hearing none. I will call the question and I will call the roll call because that's how we do it. So starting with Lynn Morgan, A or N?
Yes.
Melissa Carlstrom?
Yes.
Yes. By the way, I can hear you now. It's wonderful. I hope.
I'm using my husband's computer.
Good. Tell him that he doesn't need it nearly as much as you do. Let's see, we have Jessa West Clark.
Yes.
All right. Cheryl Charles? I didn't hear a yes, but I saw a yes, yes mouth.
Sorry about that. Yes.
All right. Did I miss anybody? Because I could have. All right, then we have a unanimous adoption of Robert's Rules for Small Boards. The next item is the election of a vice chairperson. And as you know, the vice chairperson does all the work. I just rarely call the meetings. Any nomination for this? Don't speak all at once. I'm going to nominate Cheryl Charles because I can. And I only, does anybody else would like to nominate someone? You? Nobody wants to do all the work? How very disappointing. All right. I'm going to, I'm going to close the nominations and call the question. All in favor of Cheryl Charles being the vice chairperson of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. Please say aye and we'll do the roll call with Lynn Morgan.
Aye.
Jessa, unmute yourself and tell me what you think.
Aye, provided she accepts.
I don't, we're not asking her if she's accepting.
Then aye, yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
All right. You know, as we sit right by her, who have we, is that everybody? Who did we miss? No one? Okay, I guess we should actually ask her, shouldn't we? Cheryl Charles, if nominated, and it appears you have been, will you accept?
Thank you. And I'm pleased to do so. Thanks, everybody. Happy to do it.
All right. Our next item is the election of clerk. And we've learned a lot about clerk, which is, a clerk is the person who has to go yell at people at Cherry Hill when the, when the minutes aren't posted in a timely fashion and also signs, signs some of our legal documents. Is anyone interested in doing that? Anybody want to go yell at the, at Cherry Hill once in a while? Oh, Jessa, you want to yell at Cherry Hill once in a while?
Yes, if no one else is interested, I will do it.
All right. I'm going to nominate Jessa West Clark to fill the position of clerk and be legally liable if they don't get their minutes in a timely fashion. Any other nominations? Okay, well, closing nominations and we'll do a roll call. And all in favor, Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Melissa Carlstrom? Yeah, I saw the mouths, yes. All right. Cheryl?
Yes. Sorry.
No problem.
Absolutely.
Who did I miss? I missed, I missed Jessa. Jessa, are you accepting this?
I will accept it, yes.
You're a great person and we knew that. All right. Voting members to the WNESU Board. As you know, we have three members. I like the idea of having somebody from each of the towns involved in this. We had, let's see, we had, everybody showed up last year, even if we weren't necessarily elected members. Do you want me to make those appointments or would people be interested in doing this?
I would do that again.
All right. Jessa, consider yourself the person from Westminster. Lynn, do you want to do it? Do you think Charles wants to do it?
I'm from Grafton, Jack.
I didn't, well, you could have moved, although I walked by your house the other day. All right. So from Athens, who, Lynn, would you like to do it? Do you think Charles wants to do it?
I'll do it.
That's lovely. So Melissa, Cheryl, who among you would like to do this? Saw Cheryl hold up her hand, but Melissa, you can do this if you'd like.
So I can't do things that are during the day. So if this is, when we get down later to committees, it's better to have me going to the SU meeting. I'd be willing to do that, but I know I can't take on too much.
Cheryl?
So it's up to you, Cheryl.
Who among you wants to do this?
I can do it if you want me to.
Cheryl, you did it very effectively last year. What's your thought?
You're good.
I'm, I'm actually, I would still go to the meetings, so I'm happy to continue to do it. And Melissa, I would urge you to come anytime you can. I think it's just a, it's a really important part of helping guide the whole of the supervisory unit. So as I say, I'd go anyway.
All right.
Okay, Michelle.
You can decide between you who wants to have the vote on a given night if you'd like, but we'll have Cheryl be.
Sure.
How's that? Okay. Appoint truant officer. You know, I didn't put this on because I forgot about it. Thank you, Chris, for putting this on, or Nicole.
Yep.
Who did we have for truant officer last year? I don't even remember.
Bellas Falls PD.
You know, we've had a lot of truancy this year across the district. Are you comfortable with continuing that or how do you feel about that? Pretty you on the spot.
Who are you putting on the spot?
You.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I entertain a motion to, to appoint the Bellas Falls Police Department as truant officer. Somebody needs to do that.
So moved.
Lynn doing that? Any other alternatives being suggested? Jessa?
I'm, does the law require that we use a police department or can we use HCRS or a DCF social worker? Since most of these are not criminal issues, they're issues of, a lot of them are just issues of poverty.
Yeah, you, usually it's a, it's a police department. I would say, I would add, I would say the Sheriff's Department of the State Police should be the second because you're dealing with three towns that are kind of spread out over the map. So.
You do have to have the, a power to detain. We've had the town constables do it on odd in some past years when it wasn't the BF PD. But, and the Sheriff's Department, I've had, you certainly could, I've had some sort of mixed experiences with their sort of overzealous approach to these matters, but it's up to you all.
Is the BF PD even willing to come do truancy for Grafton and Westminster, seeing how they are at the mercy of their taxpayers? How many times have you called them in the last year?
The state police is usually, from my understanding, covers most of the stuff than Westminster. And I personally don't know who responds to incidences that take place in Athens, Grafton. It usually would be that responding department that would take on the role as a truancy officer. And it's at, and it's at a bill. I believe, I don't, there's really not a whole lot of truancy that I'm aware of in any of these, any of these towns. It's usually more the middle school and the high school level that we have the truancy.
Chris, I think that Jessa brings up a fair point because I know that there's been some controversy in a BF about using BF resources without paying for them. And perhaps there's a merit in having the state police be the designated substitute in this situation. Would you be opposed to that?
You could make the state police the, the main responders if, I mean, that would, that would go too. I mean.
Okay. Jessa, are you about to make a motion to substitute the state police?
I will make that motion. And I just want to point out that according to the state numbers, the truancy rate in Grafton is around 33%. Even though I know that it's not like it is in the high school, kids getting caught skipping school, but the truancy rate in all of our districts is actually pretty high.
I would, can, can Liz, do you know how accurate that is? Because that seems awful.
It does seem high. And I think I spoke with Lynn about this maybe a few months ago.
Yeah.
We brought it up a few months ago when the state put out the numbers. And actually, Mary Beth said from attendance, because Grafton is a small school, there was actually about 20 kids who had more than 10 absences. And 10 is the cutoff where the state considers them truant. So it actually was that high.
Right. Not last year, but the year before.
I guess, yeah, not, not the most recent year.
19, so. Yeah.
I think that, you know, the state has the ability to throw a car with flashing lights out in front, which sometimes is very instructive. I wouldn't mind, you know, writing a support note suggesting that when they drop by that they might have somebody from HCRS in shotgun, because we do have a contract with HCRS. But I would, I would be inclined to support using them as the, as a truant officer, if that's acceptable. Any other comment on this point from anyone? I see Lynn.
Your comment on pairing up the sheriff and HCRS, is that something that we can do, Chris?
Well, in this case, it would be the state.
Well, yeah, you can always do it, whether or not, you know, it's, you know, those resources are stretched very thin as it is. So getting anyone to go with one or the other is going to be, probably not going to happen. It doesn't, you can't put it down. I know for the most part, this, you know, any police department, they usually make a call before they even go out to the house.
Yeah. Okay.
With all the controversy about the way police behave, I know that there's been some real effort by the Westminster barracks to call on HCRS or some social service entity whenever there are domestic disturbances. I don't know, in this case, what they do. But as I said, I'm happy to write a letter and ask them if that's, if that's okay with members and no one objects.
Do we need to vote on this tonight or just before?
Well, I think we need to have, we need to have a truant officer pretty much from the get-go. I take your point about would be nice to have a little bit more information. This one's on me. We can always vote to reappoint someone if the conversation goes very badly.
Okay.
Anyone else? I'm, I have to keep on flipping back and forth. I'm not all on the same screen. Melissa, what's your thoughts?
I'm, I'm fine. If we make the state police there, we can just ask them to include someone. And if they're able to, they can. And if they can't, they can't.
All right. Cheryl, what's your thoughts? You're muted, Cheryl, or I'm not sure what the audio issue is.
I got it. Can you just tell me, can you tell me what the motion is at this point?
The motion would be to substitute the Vermont State Police for the Bellas Falls Police Department as a truant officer.
I'm in support of that.
All right.
And I, I understand the request for more information, but for our purposes tonight, I'm, I'm in support of that motion.
All right. Now I'm going to call the roll call because we're going to be real formal for a bit. Jessa, yea or nay?
I'm going to vote nay.
Nay? Okay.
I don't think it's a criminal issue.
I kind of with you, but I, Melissa? Jesse, yes? Cheryl?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to go flip around. I don't know why this does this. Lynn?
Yes.
All right. So I'm seeing a majority in favor, one nay. And I will add as a coda that it's my understanding that I will ask the Vermont State Police if they can bring someone from HCRS to these situations. And if they respond to the negative, I will be bringing this back up as an agenda item and we'll discuss it at greater length. Oh, my. Okay. Set time, date, and location of regular monthly meetings. The big issue I have with our meeting time is that it conflicts with the meeting time of the select board in Athens. And we did say that we wanted to make sure we could have regular one-on-ones with the various select boards. What's, Lynn, are they, what's your thoughts on this? What do you, what would you like us to do?
Well, if we could switch it to a different Thursday, would that work for everybody?
I'm seeing Melissa nod yes, seeing Jessa being thoughtful. I haven't seen Cheryl yet. What do you all think?
Well, so we, right now, we talk about the first and the third Thursdays, first being optional. What if we switch to the second and the fourth Thursdays, if that helps? And the second Thursday would be optional, it would be if we needed, and our regular always hold it meeting would be on the fourth, if that solves the problem with Athens. Lynn, can you help me with that?
Yes, that would.
Jessa, what do you say to this?
I'm fine with moving it. I just vaguely remember we had this discussion last year. And we ended up on the dates we ended up with because there was other conflicts, but it doesn't seem like there's any.
Chris, are there any on the, on our calendar that should, that mess with this?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at right now. And you, what days were, and you were looking at to change it to which days?
Second and fourth Thursdays.
Yeah. No, I mean, not right now. I don't think there'd be any conflicts.
Well, then we'll, we'll proceed blundering ahead. Anyone else have any comments on this?
Are we going to keep the time the same?
Well, that's up to you. Tell me what you'd like to do.
I'm always open for a tidge earlier so we can end a tidge earlier, but.
Well, I remember when we met in person, I kept on saying that if we met it earlier, we'd, we'd put a proviso in to go make a call out to Athens Pizza or something. I'm not opposed to it. What, what do you think? Lynn?
I'm, I'm good with any time.
Jessa?
I'm good with most, any time.
Way too accommodating. Somebody yell it, tell me how.
Well, there's, honestly, there's nothing else to do now.
A poor statement. All right. I see Kathy Ciano's on our, on our call tonight. Without embarrassing her, she is on the select board. Kathy, would we, if we had a readings on the second and fourth, is it going to interfere with our ability to talk to the select board in, in Grafton? Should we choose to? Oh, I caught her away from the phone.
I think they meet on Mondays.
Sound, I don't see a speaker or name, so I can't.
That's all right.
Yeah, I think they meet on Mondays.
When I've gone, it's always been on Mondays. And I can't remember the Westminster times. I somehow have a Wednesday in the back of my head, but who knows? I could be imagining.
I just, I just unmuted her, so she should be able to respond, Jack.
Hi.
Hi, Kathy. If we met.
Our meetings are the first. Boy, get a lot of feedback here.
Yeah, you got to turn either your speaker or your, or your voice down, or your mic down just a tad. Sorry. Let me try her again. Can you unmute Kathy for me?
Yep.
Kathy, can you turn down your, your speaker, your, this, your internal speaker, your, your audio, just that scotch? That will help tremendously. Let's try one more time.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Your, your system doesn't allow for, for audio cancellation. That's why it's doing that.
I don't know what to tell you, other than the select board meets the first and third Monday of the month.
All right. Kathy, I'm going to cut, have them cut you off. I'm really sorry, but that's helpful. That's very helpful. All right. So unless there's a problem with Westminster, let's do 6 o'clock, second and fourth Thursdays. And I'll make the motion just to save everybody time. Is there further discussion on this?
Westminster's website says that they meet on Wednesdays. So that should not conflict.
Then I was right. God knows, that's pretty good. All right. So any further discussion? All in favor? Jessa?
Yes.
Melissa, I saw a thumb up. Let's see. Lynn?
Yes.
Oh, Cheryl?
Yes.
All right. The second and fourth Thursdays at 6 o'clock, with the understanding that I spring for peace that the first time we actually all meet in person. All right.
Should we put a location on it?
Very good point. And this is important. We didn't, but let's come back and talk about that. Right now, the right now, the state allows us to move to meet virtually. It has been my intent, assuming I was, I want to hear again, to continue to have this be a virtual meeting until such time as it is allowed not to be, with the understanding that members would be invited and encouraged to participate virtually. Do you think that we should put a proviso in to that effect? Or do you think we should just say that we're meeting virtually until such time as we have to all clear and then decide?
I go with the latter. Go with meeting virtually. And then when the, when we have the opportunity to meet again, bring that up and.
Would that be, would that be acceptable to everyone? Shout if it's not. All right. I'm going to assume that retro. Shout if it's not. All right. I'm going to assume that retroactively and magically, that was part of the, of the last motion. And it is that we will be meeting on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And at six o'clock, we will be meeting virtually until such time as we have clearance to meet in person, at which time we will meet and determine the place of our location. So that actually happened and nobody knew it. Let's see, where else have we got? And this is always a favorite, which is the Brattleboro reformer being used to announce school board functions. The, um, in, 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 yeah, this is often an issue because the reformers' presence has not always been that good in Bellas Falls. I think it's been pretty darn good from the perspective of all three communities, but maybe Cheryl, Melissa, the last time you picked up a paper at your local store, which one did you get? The reformer or the Eagle Times?
I'd go Brattleboro.
Cheryl?
Yeah, I, I read the reformer daily online.
Oh, Cheryl always answers my phone calls. So I will, I will move that we establish the Brattleboro reformer to be used to announce school board functions and activities. Any further discussion? As he wanders across the screen here. All right. Um, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor? Lynn?
Yes.
Jessa?
No, and I will lodge my perpetual objection that we should not rely on a format people have to pay to read.
Fair point. Melissa?
Although, yes.
Cheryl?
Yes. And I didn't hear Jessa's objection. I simply couldn't hear it.
At the risk of being a little irregular, Jessa, why don't you wait this out? Because you've done so in the past. It's a good objection, as I recall.
Um, I just, yeah, every year I lodge an objection, especially to the reformer, because that is a format that requires people to purchase to be able to read. Honestly, most of the newspapers are the same, and our free papers don't publish every day, so we're not in a good spot. But, yeah, I don't think people should have to pay for a subscription to read the notice from the school board, even though we have it in another format on the bulletin board at the SU.
I will take that as advice as to whenever possible, post, post-board functions and activities in all our weeklies and local free media, in addition. If, that, I don't know that that necessarily addresses your objection, Jessa, but it, it's something that we've been trying to do with the Grafton News and the, and the Westminster Gazette and the Athenian, at the very least. And I think it's reasonable to ask us to make sure we at least send out press notes to the other papers whenever we can. Does that help at all? And I'm asking you, sorry.
Yeah, that helps. I think we still need to establish a paper to record that.
We have to have a paper record, because sometimes you have meetings that are emergency meetings, and they're, and even they don't do a, a seven-day-a-week service anymore, but they're as close as we've got locally.
Okay.
All right. So have I, and I believe that the motion passed with my, with the chair's statement intact about making a best effort to contact the other papers. Again, we're, small boards, we're violating all sorts of stuff, but it's a small board, so we can do that. Let's see, where are we now? Committee assignments. Teacher negotiation and staff negotiation are the same negotiations committee. Presently, the negotiations, as people may know, are a bit of a standoff position. I was for a cup of coffee, the chair, as was David Clark before me. Rick is the chair now. I don't know how often it's going to meet. You'll have Rick, Deb, Steve Fine as the other members. Would anybody like this assignment? I'm currently your rep, and Cheryl is a designated pan board representative for, because A, she makes a lot of sense, and B, because she helps with our, with our forum issues from time to time. Anybody want this gig?
Jack, this is Cheryl. I would just make a comment that, given how difficult this has been, given the fact that they're, yeah, that it, that it is, I think this is not a good time to make a change. I think that the current representatives should just hang in for this process at this time.
I thought you liked me, Cheryl. All right. What she's pointing out is that I avoided saying that I'm the rep, the rep of the moment. Then I'll entertain a motion to continue the representatives we have to the teacher, teacher and support staff negotiations committee.
So moved.
All right, two people that don't like me. Um, any further negotiation, any further discussion? All in favor? Lynn?
Yes.
Jessa?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Uh, who have I forgotten? Um, guess we get everybody. All right, it's moved. Now, the CIP team is the Continuous Improvement, the Continuous Improvement Program, and this is, in many ways, a board, a SU-wide committee, correct me if I'm wrong, that in many ways does what the ed committee did at the high school, and has really been focused on making certain that the, that we really do have improvement in our instruction and in our results. I am embarrassed to say I don't remember who was on our CIP team. One of you was.
I can tell you, Jack, last year, the SIP team was Pam and Melissa. And so the, the SIP team, the Continuous Improvement Plan, this is the plan that we have to put together and submit to the state so we can get our grant money. If it's not in the SIP plan, then we can't use grant money to support the initiative within the supervisor union. So it's very specific. It, it took over for the, um, almost like the strategic plans, the action plans that schools had back probably three or four years ago, and now the SIPs, the Continuous Improvement Plans. So that's why they're important. And your role as a board, what you would do is that when the administrative team and Lynn, who is in charge of the grants, puts it together, you come together as a team and review it, and we like to have the board present, just so they know, because it really gets in-depth in regards to what we're trying to accomplish as a supervisor union within, with all the schools. So it, it's usually one meeting. It's not a whole lot of time. There may be two. But we've already passed that, so you guys are good to go until next, next year.
So we don't, when would next year be?
Well, usually we look at it around, around March, beginning of April.
Well, then let's put this on the agenda at that point. Chris, can you make a note so that we have this on the agenda? Because I'm certainly not going to remember.
Be determined.
All right, just, but just put, put that on a, you know, a March or even a February meeting, so we deal with this.
And I'm happy to do it, too.
I, I'm anticipating drafting you for that. So, you know, before we're on. Finance and budget. Always, we have in the past had a committee of the whole for this, if I recall. Would, I would entertain a motion to continue that practice. This is a pretty small board. This, my, the finance budgets where more decisions get made than during the course of the year, and I really would like to have you all involved. I'll entertain a motion to make the Finance and Budget Committee a committee of the whole. Or somebody.
So moved.
All right. Jessa, any thoughts? Saw you.
No, I was gonna move that if Cheryl didn't.
All right. Um, any further discussion on this point? Lynn, what do you think? Okay?
Good, yes.
All right. Well, I'm calling the question. All in favor? Say aye. Starting with Jessa.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Excellent. So we have done that. Warrant signing, as I recall, and I think there were some issues with this. Is Teresa still on? Teresa? We've done any two members. Does that work, or is your new software make that difficult?
And, and what was the actual question? Sorry.
Okay, when we have done warrant signing, it had been our past practice to have warrant signing be any two members of this board could do so. But I recall that you needed specific names, and I'm just trying to remember what the deal is.
Well, I, I do know, and as you can see, if I use the example of the line of credit
Yeah.
documents, I was able to attach all board members, make the, you know, create the little square for the signatures. So really technically, with the new PandaDoc system, which actually is really fantastic, we could put everybody's little box on there, and if you, as a board, decide that whichever two members in the treasurer sign, the box is already there, and to my knowledge, unless, I mean, unless I'm get corrected, it doesn't require, like, if I put all the six boxes, it doesn't mean that all six people have to sign.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion, unless somebody wants to have us designate people, that it be any two members of, and Teresa, you know that I will look at them, just because I can't stand not looking at them, but would that be acceptable to my membership? Or would you like to have a designated hit person on this?
Me or you guys?
I'm kind of, I'm, I'm really kind of looking for somebody to unmute and say, I object, this is a terrible idea.
I like the any two. We've done that in the past, and it's worked really well.
All right. I'm gonna call the question, because I like it, too. All in favor of putting any two members of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District to sign warrants on behalf of the committee? Say aye, beginning with Jessa West Clark.
That's the Union Elementary District, and aye.
Union Elementary.
Not unified.
Did I do that right?
We're not unified, we're union, because there's different.
Yeah, I, I, yes. Elementary School District.
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Excellent. So we have done that. Community education support. I don't remember this.
Jack, you know, that's a carryover from Westminster. I don't think we need to address that. That's a committee that we had in Westminster some years ago, and it's not current.
This is like the Educational Practices Committee at the high school, I'm going to guess. We may want to come back at that at some point, because I think if, if boards don't look at education, I have a question about what they're doing. But let's put that on a future discussion point, because I kind of like it.
You know, it worked really, it worked really well for us for several years, and it had, it was a way for us to get a lot more community involvement, including mentors in schools. I'm thinking of a time when Mr. Clark, who I can see is on here, was a mentor to some kids who were interested, or at least one, in auto mechanics. There are a lot of things around it that have value. I, we just would say, I, I agree with, let's look at it again another time.
You know, let's put it on the, on the agenda, Chris, you're gonna have to help me remember, because I know I won't, that we want to have Community Education Support Committee as a, an agenda item. Because I think we should talk about it, nonetheless, things are so bonkers that we don't have time. I want to, I would like to address as a future point.
Just let me know when you want it to end up on the agenda, and we'll make.
All right, all right. And Cheryl, you're gonna remind me that if I forget to put it on. This is the job of the, of the, of the vice chair, is to remind the chair what he's supposed to be doing. All right, then we have committed, we finished our committee assignments. Onto number six, reports. Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, we have Mr. Pratt available tonight, so Chris, you are on.
Thank you, Jack. Um, one more thing before we move on. I know all the other boards have assigned a representative to an audit committee this year, so I would
That's right.
ask that this board assign someone as well.
I believe that we had, had Jessa doing that. It was more, I don't know if it was audit and, and business practices or some, I believe it was the terminology we had used. And I know Jessa has some very specific ideas, most of which I really liked a lot. Jessa, I, I, yeah, you noticed nobody's really volunteering, they're just being drafted by their.
No, that's, that's fine. I'll do that again. But for some reason, I thought that was an SU-level committee, not individual boards.
We'll tidy that up.
Like to have.
The SU board meets next, because I think there was a question, what the negotiations, whether it was a joint committee of the districts or an SU committee, and we need to, you know, be sure we know who is being, who's the authorization is coming from. I think it's coming from the SU with the understanding that individual boards will nominate members. And I may be inventing that because it's convenient. But in any case, Jesse, you up for that?
Yes, I will take that.
Is there anybody else who would like to do it even more than Jessa would? Gosh, I didn't see any names come up. By the way, we're going to, at a future meeting, have on the agenda the, a real discussion of the, of the advisory committees. And I want you all to know that I'm going to be looking for one of you to own that process. So there'll be a meeting when you won't want to be here, so just be aware of that. All right, with that dealt with, we're back to six A. Chris, unless there's something else we?
We, we need, I would, we need someone for the policy committee.
You're right. Now, we have a, our past member on the policy committee, which really needs to meet, by the way, was Jessa, who I not only drafted for this, but put in contact with the policy chair at at least one, if not two other districts in our area, because I think there's a lot of cross-learning that could be done. I would like to nominate Jessa to be the policy committee representative if she's willing.
Sure. I will do that again. Yes, there hasn't been meeting in a long time.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm counting on you to set some fires to make sure that policy meets.
Yeah, she's being asked to do an awful lot.
Well, would you, okay, Lynn, it sounds like an offer.
I'm wondering if the election, the clerk, that sounds like something I think I could do.
You know, that's a really good point, Lynn. Jessa, do you, would you mind uh, uh, resigning your appointment as clerk?
I will resign my appointment and move back to just sending angry emails to our representatives. That is fine.
No, you you'll advise Lynn under this uh, scenario to send angry emails. Uh, Lynn, you you're so nice. Can you send an angry email?
I I can work it up, I think. I just have to realize there's something going on.
Well, that's, you know.
Jessa.
All right, you know, uh, I, uh, so Cherry Hill is officially notified that when Lynn sends stuff, you better pay attention to it. Um, I'm going to reopen the uh, with uh, with Jessa's resignation, I'm gonna reopen the uh, election of a clerk for the for the W N U E S D.
Um, I nominate Lynn Morgan.
I'll uh, any further nominations? Lynn, uh, I'm I'm closing nomination and asking uh, for a vote of my members. Jessa, in favor?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Um, let's see, did I miss anybody? I missed Lynn, I wasn't gonna ask her. Um.
I'll take it.
Are you accepting this?
I will accept.
Actually, I think that's that's fair and a good idea. I think you'd be wonderful at it. Um, and and you're so nice if they, okay, let's see. We're anything else, Miss, what else have I screwed up, Mr. Pratt?
Fine, Jack, we can actually move on.
All right, now on to it's seven twenty-one, under those much awaited reports from the superintendent.
All right, good evening, everybody. Um, so let me start by saying that um, we did reopen the central office on July thirteenth. Um, I believe I sent and shared with everyone the um, safety protocols we have in place. We're still advising people that um, our business be done through emails and um, phone conversations. Um, just because the office is open, we still want to lim- limit any unnecessary traffic through the building. But we are open, um, phones are being answered. Um, in addition to that, it's been a busy week, couple of weeks, more than usual. Um, we have a SU-wide reopening task force committee. And it's made up of about, I think we're up to forty-four people now. And we have administrators. It's gonna take me a little bit because I don't want to, I don't want to miss all the different categories because I feel it's very important for that. So we have board members. We have administrators. We have teachers. We have NEA reps. We have custodians, nurses, restorative practices, special education, clinicians, transportation, technology. Um, and so what we did from there is we had a a large meeting that um, Cheryl was at, Priscilla and Colin James, all representations from the boards attended. And that was on Monday. And it pretty much was an opportunity to give everyone an opportunity to to share, whether it's concerns or suggestions. Uh, we, the meeting lasted about two hours. Um, and at the end of the meeting, what we did is um, I notified everyone that because it's such a lot, it was such a large group to work and really accomplish stuff. We broke the forty-four people up to sign up for different subcommittees. The subcommittees were to take on the responsibility of um, the different areas that will be responsible. For instance, the nurse would be the nurses, the 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 subcommittee screening group would be working um, with coming up with the procedures for all the screenings that need to take place before any of us enter the buildings or get on the bus. We have the maintenance, um, in building and maintenance. They, you know, would do the um, sanitization and cleaning schedules and making sure that um, as an SU, we're all covering these certain areas. We have um, socially emotional um, subcommittee that's looking at, you know, exactly that. We want to make sure that we're taking care of um, the students socially, emotionally with everything they're coming back. We have um, transportation because we really get, we gotta look at transportation because um, how that's gonna work with all these new practices in place that we have to do, especially the screenings. We have to take a look and take into consideration that for screening every kid before they get on the bus, we gotta look at the routes that we're taking. Because the last thing we want to do is start causing traffic jams and people are gonna get to work. And so those are the things we kind of look at. We also look at, and we have to look at, the transportation committee will look at possibly consolidating a lot of these bus stops and routes because if there's a student who gets to the bus stop, has a temperature, but there's no one there to take him home, we have to think about, you know, a safe place for them. You know, so there's so many different levels to what we need to come up with with the fall. It was important that we created all these subcommittees. We have an academic committee, which was the largest one. And they're gonna look at, you know, the the um, academics and extracurriculars to figure out the best way to really look at everything we have to do um, moving forward in the fall, considering that it's constantly changing. So they all met this week. We have two more that will meet tomorrow. I've tried to get as many as as too many as possible. I haven't been able to get to them all. I think I missed um, the academic and the socially emotional one. Um, but all in all, I think we're making good strides in regards to trying to figure this out. And then next week, we're hoping to have these subcommittees wrap up and send the stuff into me so we and my leadership team can put it all together. Because the following week, we want all the schools to, with the information that we've done as subcommittees, to take that information and tailor it to their school. Um, so it's a huge undertaking. Um, you know, but we're not alone. Every school in the state has to do it. Um, in addition to that, I did, I put, I felt, you know, there that parents in the community really need to have something in regards to what are they looking at when they're coming back from the fall? Even though we don't know one hundred percent what we're looking at. I tried, I put out on the website and I emailed out to everyone yesterday. This at least will give them a basic understanding of all the different areas that we're looking at and possibly how we're going to approach it, knowing that it can change on a regular basis. So that is on the website and I did try to email it to all families and board members and teachers, anyone who I had email addresses for. So you can access that at the website. Actually, I can just show you real quick. You go into our website, scroll down to the bottom, hit view more.
I'm not sure everybody can, can everybody see the documents that uh, okay, I'll make sure.
And this is pretty much what you'll see. It's a little opening to explaining what they're looking at. And try to be as clear as possible to this draft form. But I really didn't think it was fair that we, that with the weeks going by, that parents in the community didn't have some sort of understanding of what we're trying to do. So and it's, it was important for us to um, have something that is a usable document. It's just not paragraph after paragraph. You know, anyway, if people had questions, they could go on and look and um, really use that as a tool to understand what the schools are be gonna be doing. Because they have to understand there's the STU plan, which is the broad of these, the areas we're covering that is, will be going out. And then the school plans, which covers all those broad areas, but it's very specific for that particular school. So um, that, so that was posted yesterday. In addition to that, we hired a new transportation manager. Stanley Budzik is retiring. And so I hired Jennifer Rose, who was a former driver um, for us, who'll be taking over the transportation quarter. Some of you might remember the presentation she gave last year at the SU meeting um, about, you know, improvements that we can make for transportation. And so um, she will be taking over um, for Stanley Budzik. She'll be starting on Monday. Um, meeting with Stanley. Um, she, we're very, I'm very happy that she um, took this on. She's very enthusiastic and excited about it. She's got a lot of great ideas and she's willing to um, do a lot of the stuff I'm throwing at her already because we really want to try to this year utilize the software that we have for routes, parent notifications, for stop times and everything. So we're gonna hopefully be bringing it to a whole nother level in regards to communicating with families so they know their kids are safe and where they are and what time the bus is gonna arrive and leave. Um, beyond that, I think the only other thing is to welcome our two new principals um, under this new board. Liz is not new, but she's, you know, in Westminster and she's still part of the district. And we're lucky enough and um, pleased to have Helen join us as the principal of Athens Grafton. So I wanted to welcome both of you as well. Um, so I think for me, that's all I have right now. Um, the only other thing I would say is that we interviewed business managers and um, we offered it, we offered it, so I'm just waiting now. And I'll make the announcement on that at the SU board meeting on the twenty-second, I believe. So that position will be filled as well.
There are going to be a lot of questions, Chris. Uh, kind of just because this is, this is probably the most significant uh, pretentious opening we've had uh, since the elementary school was built. Um, and so I'm gonna walk around. I do note, I just want to kick it off by noting a couple of things. One, that don't assume that just because you sent out invitations and people didn't respond that they weren't interested because I understand from one of my colleagues here that, and something I checked on, that uh, Vermont Telephone had a, had a hiccup uh, over the last several days. And uh, several people were not getting even any email correspondence uh, from us or some of the other local uh, businesses and and individuals. And got them in a big cluster in the last portion of the day. So I want you to check in with with them. Uh, and the second is, there is, I've been asked to uh, by people in our community uh, to advocate to the extent that I can for hybrid models because there are people in our communities that are are concerned about having the option of deciding, having the parents decide if the kids want to be in the building or not in addition to whatever we recommend. Uh, I will, now that I've cut everybody's um, comments, eaten them myself. Yes, Chris?
Uh, just when you finish, Jack, Colin James, who was also on the um, the SU task force wanted to chime in as well.
Oh, then Colin, I I I did see you and wanted to welcome you to the meeting. Uh, you may have to unmute yourself, introduce yourself to those folks who don't know you and and talk.
All right, thank you very much, Jack. Um, my video's not up. I won't take much of your time because I know you guys are busy and you got a lot going on uh, with your agenda. So thank you, Jack, for allowing me to speak. My name's Colin James. I am a Bellas Falls Union High School school rep, uh, member, excuse me, and I'm on the task force for the district-wide program for your opening the schools. Um, if any of your board members have any questions, please email me ideas, thoughts. This is a very challenging, I'm, us, this is a very challenging uh, task force. So I just want to throw that out there. Um, and it's been a great opportunity, learning. And I just want, you know, all board members, please, if you have any thoughts or ideas, just please email me because I don't have all the ideas. I don't have the crystal ball. Um, but I just really appreciate everybody working together.
Colin, let the board know what committee you are on.
I am on the transportation committee as well as the food services.
Great.
Thank you.
Now, um, it is, thank you, Colin. I appreciate your uh, eating party on Thursday for this. Um, I I, just for the record, I know that uh, that uh, Cheryl is involved. I'm hoping that Lynn will also be involved. I I'll be involved just so I can't stop not being involved. Uh, Jessa is uh, an advocate. I frankly think you'll hear from all of our members. Melissa has a background that a few other people have in this space. I just think that, especially in early ed. And I uh, I am looking forward to their contributions. There will be no wallflowers from uh, this district, I think you'll find. Um, in fact, back to the original, I I know some of you had said earlier that you anticipated having questions for Chris. How should we do this? Do we want to do a round robin or or was somebody want to have their hand up? Oh, heck, Jessa, why don't I pick on you first just because you're on my screen?
Okay, well, I have two things. Um, one, are we still using the Maryland Recovery Plan as our framework? And two, um, Michelle Doliffe is here, but she couldn't get her computer working for public comment. Is it okay if we let her speak? Um, since this is pertinent to her comment?
Unless I have an objection, would that be okay with members? Looks like, oh, Michelle, looks like you got a, got a microphone. I have to turn it on. Go for it.
I'm just concerned about school opening in the fall. And I'm wondering, um, I heard you earlier talking about a remote option. If families are uncomfortable sending their kids? I'm wondering if remote learning is going to be an option or if we should be looking into homeschooling?
Um, you know, we, you know, what this, from the guidance from the state is right now is we're, we're trying to, I don't have a definite answer for you right now. One of our options is we are trying to look at what remote learning would look like, period. K through, K through twelve. What the state is highly recommending is that for primary grade levels that we really need to have in-person instruction. And we're, right now, we're looking at a way to provide a hybrid instruction um, following the state and CDC guidance, because nothing's really mandatory in regards to providing learning, the distant learning for students who may themselves be at risk or have a family member that puts them in that risk category. And if that's the case, you know, we would, um, we're looking into seeing how we can provide that option. Um, another thing we need to look at, you know, if if it's opened, if the hybrid learning is opened up to more than just the ones who are susceptible or a family member is susceptible and they fall into that category. We open it up to others beyond that, um, we'd have to have um, an understanding and a sign off by the parents, guardians, saying that you, we, we couldn't have the flip-flopping back and forth. So tho- those are all the logistics we're trying to work at. Other decisions, you know, there's difficult, it's difficult to make a lot of the decisions because we're trying to think of everything. But right now I have no definites, but we are trying to looking at providing the education that we can without compromising it and making it equitable. It just really is, every time you answer one thing, you have two more things pop up. So, but we, to 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 answer your question, yeah, we're trying to do our best to find a way of a hybrid option on what that would look like and who would be able to access, access and under what circumstances. So, you know, that's the best answer I can give you right now. It, it's probably one of the most difficult areas of the whole planning is looking at what learning's gonna look like um, hybrid. You know, because this, the state has given us guidance. They've never, they haven't said it's mandatory that, you know, everyone has hybrid. They, you know, they can say if you, if you want to just stay in the hybrid model, you can do that. So we're really just trying to figure out what's best for our community and our SU and still trying to provide the best education possible. So it's definitely, the hybrid is something we're definitely looking at. We're trying to use a lot of resources in the SU. Um, the Maryland Plan is one resource of many that we're using because none of us want to recreate the wheel. But what we're finding is that every SU, every school, SU is unique, but so is every district within the SU. So it's just not one plan to cover everyone. It's really trying to say, oh, I like what's go, they're doing in Maryland in this plan. And I can say, oh, I like what Alaska has rolled out over here. And you try not to reinvent the wheel, but in a lot of cases, you really have to um, you do have. You do have to reinvent the wheel because our circumstances are different than other states are. So there's, there's a lot to it, but I appreciate, I appreciate the question and I'm welcome to, to more of them.
Do you have a date when the final plan is going to be released by?
I don't have a date, a solid date where we'd like to get it out, um, the second week of August. The, the tentative timeline I have is that next week, the subcommittees will meet one more time. The phone, if, and so the last week of, of July, the, um. The schools will get all that information and start creating their plans. And then from there, I want to bring it to the boards before releasing it to the public so they can take a look at it. So I would like to get it out there around the second week of August. And that's, so that's my intentions. It's not thimling in stone. If we can get it out sooner, we will. But there's an awful lot of work that, you know, keeps popping up. Like I said, you answer one question as a subcommittee and I'm sure, you know, Lynn can attest to that and so can Colin. Every time we get an answer to one question, it creates three more. So we're hoping for the second week of August.
Jess, um, I'm going to, I'm, if you've got a follow on, fine. Otherwise, we're going to go to Melissa next.
I don't have any quest, I don't have any questions.
All right, uh, then I'm going to go to Lynn. Any questions?
Uh, no.
Cheryl.
Uh, this is a time for questions specifically to Chris. Is that, I mean, I have a million questions and I'm listed later to talk a little bit further about the, um, the return to school. So I don't think I have any specific questions for Chris right now. I just have a lot of empathy, a lot of respect. For all of the challenges that you and everybody else are involved with. I see two principals, you know, on our call tonight. I see members of the public. This is an incredibly challenging time. So no questions now, more comments later.
All right, have I, have I put everybody on the spot? I think I have. Two, just two follow-ons, Chris, and this also goes for, for Liz and for Helen. One of the things that Grafton and, um, and Westminster have done. That I think are exceptional and different is in past years, they focused on, uh. Both environmental education and outdoor education. The two are different. But, uh, we, at least in Grafton's case, we've gone so far as to have the kids. Literally build classrooms out along the Saxons River that are really quite something. I don't know Helen, if you've seen these things yet, but they're, but they're unlike anything I've ever seen anywhere. And they use them into February off and on in past years. Which just goes to show you how enthusiastic kids are about doing anything that keeps them out of the classroom. And, you know, these are high humidity, high sunshine environments that, that. Where the air circulation is better than any other possible scenario. So I would just give my pitch for aggressively building that into whatever y'all decide on. With that said, it sounds like we are done the superintendent's report and we're on to. I say this with great sadness, the Westminster Principal Report. Liz?
Thank you, Jack. Um, so Westminster has been really busy, um, getting our building ready for students. Painting classrooms, cafeterias, building shelves for our new literacy materials. Ordering the appropriate supplies, um, cleaning carpets, walls and floors. But on top of the SU task force, Westminster also has a building-based task force. We meet weekly and we just review a variety of plans and keep, to keep students and staff safe when we follow the state's recommendations. So our task force, um, the members of our task force are also serving on the various SU subcommittees. So we'll continue to meet and communicate with each other. And absolutely, when you talk about outdoor educational opportunities, that is in the forefront. We want to get kids, you know, they're going to be in their classroom, but outside as much as possible. And luckily Westminster has a plethora of opportunity for that in Evans Woods, in our garden, just in the amount of land we have. So I don't think that that really is going to be an issue. But it's definitely something that we're thinking about all the time. Also, Castleton, um, offered a course this week called Create, Make, Learn Institute, which was, um. Advertised by the SU. So much of the staff is working on that and that, the feedback from that course has been outstanding. Where staff feel like they're able to make and create materials that can be done in person and also in remote learning. So there's a lot of positive feedback about that. So we just continue to look at all of our options and just making sure that we're keeping students and staff safe. And the great thing about moving forward here is that it's been a complete team effort. And, um, I have all the faith in the world that the members of these task forces. Will provide a plan that is explicit and detailed.
Anyone have questions for Liz Hartey?
Well, actually, this is Cheryl, one quick one. You just mentioned Evans Woods and the garden and all of the land and didn't mention the West West property. I, I hope that's in your thinking also.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Sorry, just slipped my mind because when I'm thinking about daily, you know, for whole school daily activity. But absolutely, that's on, in our minds as well.
Not seeing any other questions and if I'm missing somebody, please just drop, you know, open your mic and shout. Going to go on to our new principal, Helen Richards Peel. Welcome Helen. Um, tell us, uh, your report to us.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Well, first of all, uh, Liz has been just incredible in helping me get oriented to Grafton. It's obviously very near and dear to her heart and she's been a great supporter of helping me just learn. All that I need to learn about the systems and the joys of, uh, working in Grafton. So an appreciation to Liz should be noted in the minutes. She's great to work with. I'm looking forward to a year of great adventures together. So I've been spending a lot of time, you know, reading lots of information about Grafton and. Trying to put faces to names and learn as, about as many people as possible. So that I can get a sense of, uh, how all the systems work in the SU. Chris has been great to, uh, answer my questions and Lynn and certainly sitting on the task force to. Learn everything that I can about, um, this new district. I did have the opportunity to go to, uh, Liz's final, um. Day with the kids where they came and dropped off their materials and their grown books and. With all our mask, I got to meet and see all the staff and as well as parents and kids. So that was kind of fun. And then I sat in on their last day reflection that they had, um, on Friday. And I really got a strong sense of, uh, the community of teachers that work in Grafton. So that was a wonderful way to begin my time there. Um, I, then I also sat in on the two days of the Fontis and Pennell training that, um, occurred the following week. So that I'm really familiar with, uh, the literacy initiative that you all are implementing. And it's actually a training that I've done previously in my other district. So I was pretty familiar with it. So it'll be great to support the teachers as they begin this work. Even though that I believe they've been doing it already because they piloted under Liz's guidance. Um, I have my first, uh, letter to the community going out tomorrow. And in, I was waiting for it to go out tomorrow so I could announce, um, the nurse that I hope you all approve tonight. So that they are aware of, uh, who our next nurse at Grafton will be. And Carol was part of that, uh, committee in hiring and she just thinks we found a gem. And she's very excited, um, about this person. Let's see, you know, I've been busy, uh, working with, I think her name is, uh, Elijah Geller. Who is the Twenty First Century Coordinator for the After School and Summer Program. And the first steps are to get the, our, both of the schools licensed to run a, um, before and summer program. And then her next step will be to hire the coordinators. We already have, um, who are interested in having as coordinators. So it will just be a step for her to take together in place before they can start planning all the programs that we hope to offer. Let's see, you know, working a lot with Mary Beth and Gary, learning about the building and the steps he's taking. And, um, he's working on some really cool, uh, shields that he wants to put on some of the tables. So that there'll be a additional layer of protection for kids as they start to, um, you know. Do the work that they need to be doing in the classroom being six feet apart. And, you know, and little kids need to play games together and, you know, turn and talk to each other, those kinds of things. So we're thinking through all the, you know, the requirements and, um. Liz had set up a task force that I'm now taking over and we have our first meeting set up to, you know, continue to think through. Just like everybody else is in the state about what does it mean, you know, these requirements as they pertain to Grafton. So I've been busy, lots going on and, uh, being outdoors and doing environmental studies is a, just a great love of mine. I spent twenty years at the Farmer Wilderness, uh, Foundation and, you know, ran many of their outdoor education programs. And so I'm so excited that there are two outdoor classrooms. And I'm working with Elaine and we're trying to, um, purchase a tent. So that we can set up yet another area that can just be permanent so that anybody, the music teacher, the art teacher can, you know, take kids out there. And just be outdoors because we know that that's, that's the safest place, you know, for kids to be is to be outside if we can and keep on learning. So I'm having fun and I'm enjoying learning, uh, about Grafton and the community.
Thank you, Helen. Appreciate that. Anyone in my, among my colleagues or even the general public, because I see Kathy here. I see, uh, other, other community members here, Maureen. Uh, does anybody have, uh, any questions for Helen Richards Peel, the new principal of the Grafton Athens Elementary School? Not seeing a lot of questions for you. That doesn't mean anything, Helen. They're going to have lots of questions later. All right. Then unless I miss somebody, we're going to move on. Thank you very much for that presentation. See, business manager, Theresa, I think this is, you own this, um, good luck.
Okay, there's, thanks. At this moment, since the, um, reports that I gave you guys at the last meeting, there really hasn't been too much change in that regards. Except for obviously finishing out, closing out the payrolls and, um. Trying, trying to clean up all, any purchase orders that we still have open and things like that. The, the biggest things that I can note right now is that we still have, and I think, Jack, you asked about this question about, through an email. And you have two people that retired, so the annuities. Um, I didn't have a final number, so when you're looking at the, the expenditure to report that I sent you guys. That expenditure is not posted yet. I have to do a journal entry to do that and everything else. Um, and those will end up being, they get paid through accounts payable because those funds get sent directly to a very specific location. They don't get processed the same as the 403B, um, processes. Hang on, wait one second. Sorry, I have a little extra person this morning, uh, this evening. And so on top of that, I'm still doing the last minute things as far as. Certain things from the supervisory union that we do bill back, which I mentioned before, again, the workers comp and as I continue. And then, um, some other non-benefit insurances. Cleaning up assessments that are pretty much all paid up, but there was one where, um. The difference in everything else that we still had a difference from one of our billings. So I'm having AP person do that. We have some professional services that we still have outstanding. So again, we're waiting on certain invoices and stuff to come in, but we'll be rolling that stuff forward to make sure. We, we pay all payout and then we can clean up and have an actual true, trued up expenditure balance. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
All right, um, I know there was one question. I don't want to ask it for her. Cheryl, did you have, still have a question on the, on sort of our bottom line? From the other day?
Well, we, we got the, you know, the, uh, up-to-date financials yesterday as a report. I, I guess I would say that it would be nice to get them sooner, but the, but the report made no sense to me. I mean, none at all. And then I sent it to Jack to ask him to ask some questions about it. And I don't think we've gotten an update since, but it showed if, it showed more than a million dollars overage. Uh, it, it just made no sense to me. So what I would like to, pardon?
Not sure what report you're looking at. I don't, there's no million dollar overage.
So what was sent to us as Athens, Grafton, Westminster, current financials, expenditures yesterday. Did not seem accurate and I'm not sure where we are. I, I would just say that we need to see that updated. We need to see it as accurate as possible. I'm, I'm.
I under, I, I absolutely agree everything you're saying, but I can tell you that I'm, I'm not sure about the accurate, like the up-to-date. Hang on one second, sweetie. Um, as I'm not sure where you're even seeing a million dollars out. I guess I'm confused by the report. The report that I sent doesn't show that. Am I the only one not?
Theresa.
Am I the only one not seeing that?
Theresa, when I looked at it, I, I didn't see the, I didn't see Cheryl's number, but I did see a couple of places where it looked like. There was a, a budgeted allocation and an expense of roughly that amount. And then it showed a deficit, what looked like a deficit of roughly the same amount. Like we'd gone, like we'd gone over significantly. I think it's an artifact and I wasn't freaking out about it. But I, that's why I'd said to you, uh, if we had a chance to chat prior to the meeting today. Just to make certain that I understood, because, you know, this is supposed to be my thing and I was having a little trouble myself. Uh, I don't think it was anything major, but I wouldn't mind walking, uh, through it with you, um, the next day or so.
Oh, I, I mean, absolutely. That's why I was saying, just I, I, that's why when I emailed back and I said I'd be in the office all day, go ahead and give me a call.
I was one of the people that didn't get emails from.
Yeah, and, and I know that we've had, we've had troubles at the office too where, um, you know, just trying to save stuff. And I've been concerned too, but, um, it's been dragging, the whole, the whole internet stuff has been absolutely dragging and horrendous.
Well, just to let you know, I've got a couple hundred dollars in sanitary supplies that we bought for our town clerk. So I'm going to send your way the next day or so. Beyond that, uh, you know, I don't think that's going to add measurably to the deficit. But would you, do you have, uh, and I don't mean to have you pull it apart. Did you have any sense of the final billings from our, uh, from our legal folks that came from, uh, from, uh? The, uh.
No, as far as like the final billing, um, I don't have that right now because until they officially bill us with that final. I literally, I mean, I, I don't have a number from them on that. And anything that has been billed to us to date and everything else as it comes in. It's being allocated to the district that they're identifying that the expenditure is with. So it's one of those that, um, we're, you know, we're not having to do a, it's not getting all billed to the district either and then having to be split out. They started to try do that and then, um. Uh, Marlene was quick to send them back the bill and say, no, 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 you need to break this out by district to, so I can, uh. Spend it accordingly and everything else. So, um, but yeah, no, no final number at this one moment.
No issues.
No, and they've been billing us as they go along. So it's not something that they're waiting to the end to spring on a huge bill.
All right. The, the, the other thing that I will ask you without putting you on the spot, because I don't think it's fair. Just reminding you and the team at Cherry Hill. That, uh, as of March of two thousand twenty, we were the old, uh, the old constituent. Boards were supposed to approve the final report of the auditors for those individual districts. And I know that part of what the audit team has been working on is that, but, uh. Before everybody moves away or something, we want to, we do want to get, uh, either have this board or those old boards. Meet to approve those because we're, we're way past the date. And I got a not very polite note from the state several months ago asking about it. So. Bear that in mind. They, they come to me because I was the legal officer and decided. Bear that in mind, they, they come to me because I was the legal officer and decided that that was my fault.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so the, so the audit reports that we, we don't have all the ones for all the districts yet. Um, you'll, you'll see that we've been sent the Ath, the Athens, we've sent the Ath graph. Um, and we've been sent Wyndham Northeast and just, um, just a few days ago, we've got the Bellas Falls one.
Let me go on the record to say I don't care about the uh, the, the one in uh, in Rockingham, but I do kind of, I, I don't like nasty letters from uh, from Treasury, uh, asking about the state stuff.
Yeah, and I've been working with the state too, um, Sean and everything else, I, on, on different various things and I've been in constant contact too, to, to make sure that they understand that what these things, you know, that, that we're producing this and, or, or getting it to them as fast as we can.
Well, I suggested that if they had a problem, they could send something to the chair of the, the State Board of Education, since they're the ones that made this mess, but you know, that probably wasn't received very, very well. All right, thank you. Um, I really appreciate all this, I do. Um, onto committees, or is, is anybody else besides me a question for the business manager? And the questions have already been asked? Yes, Chris, I see your hand up.
Um, I, I think it's worth spending a little bit of time in regards to, um, at the very least, having you and Cheryl point out to Theresa what exactly where you saw the million dollar. Um, because I mean, I, I just think it's worth time spending on because, you know, all the community here is saying, hearing is there's overtures of a million dollars. So I'd like to spend a little time just so there's an understanding of, you know, you have true, you know, the business office saying it's not there, you guys saw it, so. You know, I myself want to understand a little better in regards to um what we're looking at here. So I would like to spend a little more time on this.
Let me state for the record that I do not believe that we are in significant deficit, because we weren't the last time we looked at it. But I was looking at, looked to me like a classic uh artifact uh of our, of our friends, the uh, the new uh, the new system. I wasn't sweating it. All I had said to Theresa was that I wanted to get together to, to, to address it, because I think it's nothing more than that. Uh, unfortunately, I had a uh, I had a business conference that went four hours instead of thirty minutes today and that's why she didn't get a call from me, plus I didn't see her note, because I haven't gotten any notes from anybody. Um, but you know, uh rest assured, members of the community, we're not in deficit of anything remotely like that, but I
I'm sorry, can I say something? Because the report that you have, I'm stumped.
All right.
Because I did see what you're, what you're looking at down there and that's not, I, I'm not sure what happened if, if, and again, like I said, this has been, because the report that I have, that I printed out, my copy too, plus I initially sent a copy um to Nicole and said, oh, I needed to fix some, change something because we're, we're doing a lot of the, the year end and re, and opening the new year. And again, with the struggling with the internet and other things, I was very concerned. So now I'm looking at what you're looking at. And I, I feel dumbfounded because of the, what you're seeing for the encumbrance. I only have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars encumbered and I have in, and I have a year-to-date expense of six million four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And then I have a begin, a budget balance of two hundred and fifty-six thousand unspent funds. So I see your concern there when I'm looking at that report. Um, and mine was run at ten forty-seven, yours was run at ten twenty-one, and I know I had to, I know I was having, so I don't know, I, I don't know how that report
No worries.
That's sent, because now I see what you're looking at.
No worries at all. We'll get it tidied up. That's what uh, that's what phone calls are for.
Yeah, and that's definitely not the real numbers and that, I, I absolutely see your concern there, but I can tell you, I don't, I don't know what happened, because that is not, the two hundred and ninety-five net position, if you go to that last page, that two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven seventy-five is the actual, that is the true year-to-date net position at the moment. But what you see the forecasted net position should actually say about a hundred and forty-five thousand, um, should say, yeah, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And um, and, and so I don't know where, I, I don't know how that happened, because what I was looking at on screen did not say that, when I exported it out and saved it, so I'm stumped.
So is this, so Theresa, just so I can, so this is the, this is the one that was?
Yeah, because I sent Nicole some and we were ha, and I was just having troubles with something with the singe dragon, so then there was something, I remember sending her out and saying, here, um, load, replace it with this one.
This is why I have a spreadsheet, Theresa, you know, I, I knew it wasn't right.
The second email has way different numbers.
Yeah.
Does it, does it, yeah, because
Yeah, the ten forty-seven or ten forty-six, something this, the one that came twenty minutes later.
Yes. Because I was having dragging, the system was dragging and I, and then I think I was looking at them and I'm like, what the heck is going on? And so um, and, and it wasn't just like, it wasn't like e-finance was having a problem. It was like I said, I was working on spreadsheets and I had to keep saving them and every time I would bring, go to look for them, they weren't there on the drive and I'm like, it, it, we were just having a lot of troubles with the internet and uh, like the network altogether. So then I said, let me resend these because those numbers are not right. So I do apologize that you even saw those, because I knew those weren't right.
No worries at all. We, you know, when, the only ones that, we've been tracking pretty close to forecast the entire year. Didn't think there was going to be any last minute, you know, eight hundred thousand dollar kind of glitch, so we will
Right, yeah, there's definitely not that kind of a, we, we are absolutely not in the hole. We're, we're, we're on the positive in that respect.
Yep, and which is what I had forecast, so I was good. Um, that's why, like I said, I wanted you to know there was an issue, but didn't want, didn't want anybody to get excited or defensive about it.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Understood.
It, it's what it is. Hey, uh, thanks so much, really appreciate it.
Uh, Jack, let me, since I raised it, let me quickly interject. I had no sense whatsoever that we were actually in that kind of deficit position. I find myself frustrated by our difficulties with reporting. And I'm not blaming Teresa or anybody else. It's just been an issue that we've been struggling with for some time. So for the public, absolutely, we have no indication that there's a financial problem. And we do have some systems things that still need to be cleaned up to help us get accurate reports when we need them. That's, that's all I would say. We're not in that kind of financial problem and I look forward to getting a better reporting system for all of us.
Amen. All right, anyone else uh comment on this before we move on? I don't want to cut anyone off on this, because I think it's important. All right, I'm not seeing any hands, but shout if I missed you. Um, we're going to go on now to committee and town boards. E one is policy. Um, we have, our representative is Joe Jessup, I'll keep her. Uh, Chris Jessup, when are we going to look forward to a policy committee meeting?
Well, with the current work that we're doing with the return of school, um,
You can say a while from now.
There, there's gonna, I mean, there's gonna be some policies that we may have to um, meet about. To um, for one, um hybrid learning, we talked, we spoke a little, I spoke a little bit about that earlier in regards to we have hybrid learning, you know, what is the policy that's tied to that? Who's, who has access to it? What are the criterias to it? I think we need policies to go along with that to back up whatever we end up doing. Um, I mean, since we've been into this COVID crisis, I mean, for a while they were, you know, I wouldn't say for a while there, but we started to get on a routine of meeting about policies and then this COVID came and I think everything just took to back burner, but um, when we get back to normalcy, you know, there, I've been going through the policies, there are quite a few policies that need updating. We have some policies in there going back as far as um, early two thousands, so there's definitely work to be done on the policy committee. It's just right now, what we were spending time with last year when we were meeting were all the mandatory policies and we got a little bit done with there, but um, it's like everything else, there's a lot of work to be done. It's just a matter of um, prioritizing which policies we have to go through first. And under this current circumstances and where education is going, I guarantee there's gonna be a lot more policies that we're gonna have to update based on what we're going through right now.
Um, my colleagues should be aware that there was an informal chain of letters going around uh to board chairs the other day and part of the advice that uh Chris got, and he got it from me among others, was that this is, we're, we're sort of in battlefield triage mode and probably will be for kind of a while. And this is one of those places where a, a lot of things that we really ought to do might get put aside in terms of things we absolutely must do, simply because there's bandwidth issues all over the place and I hope that uh everyone will understand, but uh, at the same time, we do need to get uh, some core policy stuff done, because we're, we may be in violation of God knows what regulations of the AOE or the feds if we don't, so. So we have every ten year updates and some things and I looked at the dates and that happened a while ago.
Yeah, we're okay right now. I mean, we got the, the important mandated ones, harassment and all that stuff. We were able to get those in. It's just moving forward, um, it's gonna take me a lot of time to go through the policies and see which ones are affected by the new learning structure that we have in place. So um, I've already started going through that. There, there are some, but like, like you said, Jack, it's about triaging and right now, um, I know we're in a pretty good spot. But that's not high in my priority in regards to getting ready to open schools.
Fair enough. Uh, budget committee, sometime we are going to have to start meeting and I'd like to get a budget done earlier than everybody this year rather than later. Um, we don't have, you know, we, we've talked about budget, I know, committee of the whole. Um, I don't know when the earliest would be, obviously it's not going to be in August or September, but can we even start the process in October, Chris, this year? Is that a possible thing?
I, I would like to and the, you know, in the past in other SUs, I've, I've started it in mid to late October, so.
All right.
Better.
Then, then let us assume, again, gonna have you uh tag this, that we uh, we consider having a in the past, we've had budget meetings be that second meeting of the month and focus on it. And that perhaps starting in October, we can look forward to having that second meeting of the month be dedicated to budget work. Things were kind of messy this year because of e-finance and God knows what all else, but I think it would be, be good, particularly if we're going to try to figure out what's going on and have enough money for whatever contingencies we may face in this new world we're living in.
Yeah, I, I, I think once we hit um, September, um, the, the board set, you know, makes the decision that the second meeting of the month or the first meeting of the month will be for uh budget development.
All right. Um, any comments, any questions on that? Don't see any hands. Uh, advisory committees and commissions, we have advisory committees. We need to start to bring them into the process. I am happy to see Kathy is, Sienna is here and we've had some other folks that have been, there were been in, Cheryl's been most diligent about making certain that uh, the uh Westminster folks are in, at least aware of what's going on. I would like to start to delegate a couple of tasks to them and um, I'm wondering if anyone would like to help me convene either town level ones or what, we'd like to have everybody meet together at a board meeting uh sooner rather than later. Any thoughts on this?
I'd be glad to work with you on this, Jack.
I would look forward to that. Um, anyone else want to sign up for this?
Yeah, I'm agreeable.
All right, is that Kathy? Who, who, who's that? Excellent.
That was Kathy.
All right.
And Jack, I'll, I'll help too. I'm happy to.
I would, you have no idea how much I would appreciate if you all would do that, because I, we should have done this months ago and I want to get, get a move on. Alrighty, um, with that said, I'm gonna ask you two to, you know, to call among yourselves and uh Lynn, you want to lead this and get ahold of Kathy and Cheryl and just have a chat about, you know, process? So that we can get that, just have a recommendation before us sooner rather than later. Would you mind doing that?
That'd be fine.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, old unfinished, all unfinished items for action discussion. Um, I'm going to move six D up to A with your indulgence. And the reason I'm doing that is because as you may all know, we didn't win. The Athens suit literally walked around all the constitutional issues, decided that the only thing they had to assure themselves of was that there were no direct intentional violations of the legislative language irrespective of legislative intent, irrespective of constitutional errors, issues irrespective of damned near everything. You can quote me on that one. So what happens next besides our sitting and sulking about it? Well, maybe not a lot, but this is where I need your input. One of the options that has been discussed in other involuntarily consolidated districts is to follow the Act forty-six protocol of having communities withdraw from these unified districts. The towns that, there is explicit, explicit language to allow towns that voluntarily consolidated to do so is not one hundred percent clear that those that were involuntarily consolidated could do so. It does seem clear that an outright dissolution would not pass muster with the SBE, who would in the final analysis have to approve any actions. It's also clear to me that any action would probably have to be undertaken with the leadership of these advisory committees with support of the select boards in the individual towns. Now, here's the, here's the rub. One of the reasons that Athens, Grafton and Westminster were involuntarily consolidated was that in the judgment of the SBE, Athens and Grafton should merge and that we were tardy in doing so. I don't think that's true, but that's their judgment, tardy in doing so and that um Westminster was sort of a casualty of their actions. Would people feel comfortable if Westminster, I don't even know if Westminster want, is they may have lost all interest in withdrawing, but I'm guessing not. Would peo, would people in Athens and Grafton feel uncomfortable if Westminster began the process of withdrawal? Um, if it doesn't cost us anything, uh, would they feel like they're, we're stuck together in Athens and Grafton and we have a problem with that? I kind of need to know. Oh, Lynn, I'm gonna start you off. As I, as I said, I really don't have a sense and I'm asking.
Um, I'm not quite sure how this all forms. I mean, would Athens, Grafton would stay together? They would pull from Westminster?
Well, the, we, we are the incumbent district now. So anyone that withdrew would have to withdraw from the unified district.
Yeah.
I don't see that I have any standing to keep any community from withdrawing if they so choose. I am simply relaying my personal judgment.
Right.
Advised by some council, not ours, that the best chance of success for this would be for Westminster to withdraw and to have Athens and Grafton learn to live with it. I don't know if that's acceptable, but I, you guys are here. I'd be kind of, I'd kind of like to know how we determine that or what your thoughts are.
Jack, I had a question. Is
Yeah.
It's my understanding too that the the current board would have to vote to approve to release Westminster from the, the union.
That is correct. We would have to do that. I'm, I'm, I may be misjudging my colleagues, but my, my gut has been that if there's anything that the my colleagues have been unified on is that they would, you know, they don't like the idea of anybody being forced to be in this. And the, the flip side of this is if we let anybody out, it probably means the folks that are left in get to stay that way.
As far as like from Athens, the only rumbles I've heard is having to ship all of our children to Westminster. And the way I understand it, we are only secure in keeping the F Graft school for two years. And after that, they could close it down.
Well, the only they is you and Jessa and Lynn and uh and, and myself and uh Melissa. And I think the chances of that happening at least at the moment are vanishingly small. The, it would, it would, it would become zero, obviously, if uh, if uh Westminster was its own thing. Uh, I, like you said, I don't know that they would want to be and I don't know that they would be almost immediately at risk of being hooked up with somebody else. But I, I want to at least set the, set the ground, you know, rules out there and have people understand the implications of a step like that. And I want to make sure that, you know, we would be comfortable with that or if we really want to ask folks to hold off for a little bit while we think about some more. Jessa, what do you think?
Um, so Lynn, the other concern is that yes, this board would have to vote to close schools. And right now this board has equal representation from all towns. However, when my term is up, there is nothing preventing me from running for the Westminster seat on our board. Or Westminster with their 2,300 voters, having someone from their town run for the Grafton or Athens seats because there is one electorate.
A point, a point of information. You actually buy the, by the current uh articles of agreement, you have to be a legal resident in the town which you're at. Uh, so we, that, that's not possible, but what is possible is that uh someone who is very sympathetic to a view that's not, say, Grafton's or a view that's not for that matter Westminster's could run as a resident from that community and be elected on the votes of the other two. Because you get to vote for, it's an, it's a, it's reserved seat at large, a formulation that we owe to Ed Banks who came up with it. And the other state who loved it to death.
Um, as far as, yes, I think we should wait a bit and talk to the individual towns, the select boards, the voters, et cetera. But I would only support this if it was a simultaneous withdrawal of all three of us.
Yes, and that's the thing I don't think we're gonna be able to get away with.
I think no matter what we do, um, Dan French is going to step into whatever level he has possibly allowed in the State Board of Education because we are um clearly antagonistic towards them. I would, I would be happy to see this happen, but I would want all three towns to simultaneously withdraw. See what they're gonna do.
Yeah, and that'd be a dissolution. And I think, I mean, it sounds like I need to talk to some more people. Melissa, uh, you and uh, you and uh Cheryl obviously get a vote in this and maybe things have changed from your reading of your communities. What is your sense about all of this?
Uh, well, yeah, I, I'm not sure. First of all, let me see, I think it's, it's somewhat premature, um, but now that we've gotten the results from the Supreme Court, and we got a strong, interesting dissent that spoke to many of the issues that some of us uh care about, I think people are digesting it. I think what would be the rationale? Were there a proposal for um us to return to an Athens, Grafton School District and a Westminster School District? I know for many Westminster folks, it will be again a concern about a um the, a, a desire to really empower town meeting to once again be the place where the fundamental issues about the day in, day out of the school are addressed in a thoughtful way in town meeting. So I know that there are many people in Westminster who still want that kind of thoughtful discussion to take place within town meeting. In contrast with a once a year annual meeting of the voters from three towns where the only focus is the school. So there, there will be, there is continuing sentiment for that. One of my, one of my thoughts as well is when we so conscientiously, uh, many of us on this call tonight and the others, when we worked so hard on the alternative governance structure and proposal, that was to carry forward Rockingham and, and the high school and Athens and Grafton and Westminster. So it was all of us. And one of the unfortunate byproducts of our forced merger is how much less time we've spent in dialogue with our friends from Rockingham, you know, Bellas Falls, Saxons River, uh, all of that. So, so part of, I think some of the thinking that's going on around here is were there to be an, an unmerge of some kind that I would really personally want to see our energies go into strengthening the supervisory union overall and all of the collaboration and cooperation that we can do to help all the children, which was the intent of the Act forty six alternative governance proposal in the first place. So with all of that, you know, I, I can see that it's almost eight thirty, it's a long night, we're, we're talking reopening schools in a COVID climate. So I don't think we should spend a whole lot more time on it, Jack. I do appreciate your bringing it up and I think we'll have more discussions about this and a lot, a lot more to learn. But were it to happen, um, again, my sentiment would be that the result would be to have us strengthen all of our communication and all of our service to the children and families in this entire supervisory union as a result. That would be my hope for all of it, while at the same time strengthening what's going on locally in support of the schools in Athens and Grafton, in Westminster, in Rockingham.
Fair enough. Melissa, I, I started to ask you and then somehow didn't, I guess. Uh, did, any thoughts?
Um, so tonight is the first night that I knew we could do something beyond what's already been done, so I hadn't thought too much about it. Um, my biggest concern, honestly, even though I'm a Westminster resident, I feel more concerned about protecting the Athens, Grafton community personally because they are in a vulnerable position and I think that we need to make sure that we don't allow them to be vulnerable in that way.
Nice.
All right, I, 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 this, this is a discussion that I'm hoping when we get our our advisory committees uh in place that we'll have a, a more robust one. But I just wanted to kick it off because I, I know there's going to be interest and I know that we can't just let what's happened go by. Uh, thank you all. I, I, I actually learned stuff that I didn't know from terms of all of you. Thank you. With your permission, I'm going to assume that governance and harmonization can be a bit put in advance for tonight and move on to Articles seven, eight and B. And Theresa, you have a, you have a a line of credit. Item here.
Uh, hi. I know that um at the last school board meeting, um, that you had discussed the line of credit and everything else and approved for the line of credit to go out. And, but I, um, I noticed that I didn't see it when I read back the meetings and the meeting minutes, that I didn't see the approval that was on there. So I know that I, I just want to make sure that clearly I was already, because everything was in the works, was already uploading and sending you the documentation like we discussed earlier.
Just want to make sure there wasn't a hiccup somewhere. All right, then you consider that having been dealt with. Uh, Cheryl, this is a task force for reopening schools. Uh, there's a lot here and as you said, it's eight thirty, but I think people are interested in what you have to say.
Well, Chris did a great job in, in his report early on and I would say as I look here, uh Helen and Liz and I, I don't know that Colin is still on the phone. I'm looking to see who's participating in the, in the task force. So I know that Helen and Liz and I, for example, today were in the subcommittee on uh academics, recess and extracurricular activities. Let me just make a few general comments. Chris has outlined the timeline. The various subcommittees are completing our work next week and need to get reports to the administration by next, a week from tomorrow. And then the following week, as Chris said, there will be a more uh specific focus on each school figuring out its own plans with the recommendations from these six subcommittees. And Chris outlined those earlier. Um, if you need to hear them again, I'll be happy to run through them. But they're looking at, you know, many different aspects of all of this, uh, all of which are important. And it's interesting, you know, you know, e- even in today's academics recess extracurricular session, social and emotional, um, needs of students and families came up as an extremely high priority. We know that food and, uh, food is running pretty smoothly in lots of ways because of all the practice we've had for the last many, many months. But I'll be interested in hearing what they come up with, the health screening group, facilities and sanitation and transportation of the others that are, that are meeting. I want to, I want to say that as a, as a citizen, as a parent, as a grandparent in this case with one child in the Westminster school, one grandson and another little one coming. I, you know, I share the worries of so many and I, I, I know that Chris and the leadership in this district from an administrative point of view are starting us in a, in a risk position where we know there are risks. The, the model that Chris has posted on the website puts us in not a green area where we can say, oh, there's nothing to worry about, but a yellow zone where there's a lot to worry about. And I would say that we're watching now with this new outbreak of people in Vermont. We're now a state that's seeing an increase in diagnoses at the moment. I, I just can't emphasize enough how quickly this can change for the worse. And uh, we just all truly have to be as cautious and careful as possible. I, I, um, i- i- and I will also tell you that being a part of the call yesterday with the now about forty people uh on this task force that Chris has convened, I am so compelled and inspired by the goodwill, by the thoughtfulness, by the just integrity of what I'm hearing and people's concerns. So this is a hardworking group of people that are doing what they can to come up with the best possible solutions for folks. And, and we all know that we also have to be nimble, that things can change so quickly. That we're going to, again, I, I think it is safety first. Um, there's something, now, you know, many of you know that I'm a big advocate for opening the doors and going outside. I say that not just because I know it's good for children from an academic point of view and a health and a social, emotional point of view, but to something that Helen, Richard Spiehl said a while ago. She said outdoors is the safest place to be. Well, she's right. And that's what the evidence is showing us. So even if one, a teacher, were not using the outdoors environment as a project-based, you know, integrated arts and everything else place for learning, just being outdoors reduces the risk from this virus. So that's one of the reasons that I'm advocating for opening as many doors and windows as we can through all of this. But I think um there's another point I want to make, and again, this is me personally, we talked about it a little bit in the academic and extracurricular recess group today. I want us to be so welcoming to all parents in this community who have an interest still in public schools. And I'm worried that we're not, if we're not going to be flexible enough, we're gonna lose people and push them into homeschooling that would not otherwise go there. We have to be ready to greet every child and every family, which is why I would advocate. And Chris, I hear your concerns. Oh, good. I love that thumbs up. Great. Because I'm, I'm worried that, you know, I, I do believe the hybrid model is the way to go. I think we have to be flexible and let, you know, some people do more with technology than others. I think the idea that came up today in the academic recess extracurricular group that said, well, let's, you know, the it works better for some families that are a little technology averse, maybe they're unprepared, maybe they're unfamiliar. Or we've got a whole nother group that's philosophically opposed to the use of technology, especially with younger kids. They don't want the kids having that be their medium for interaction and learning. But one of the points that was made today is that if that can be, if the technology can be used like we're doing it tonight, where we can see each other, where it becomes kind of a, you know, it's a, it's a check in, it's a community circle. It's a, you know, let the whole family be there with the children and people can see one another. That's a very different use of technology than having uh children simply using that for the way that they're practicing skills, working on literacy, whatever else it might be. So in our hybrid model, I would li, I personally would like it to be as flexible as we can. I'm hearing a lot of that from the teachers, uh, and I, I know we will from the parents when they're back in the room and I, and, and others who are working to help. So Chris, I want us to be able to help you to, you know, cross all those keys and dot those i's. Because another, another dimension that's been being reinforced for me, we have to make sure that we have protocols in place and clear criteria for all of the decisions that we make, whether to, whether to open the school or not, whether to allow for um the flexibility or not. We have to, we actually have to document that so that, that people have a clear kind of checklist to say, this is why we're doing it this way uh at this moment in time. And that's partly, um, it's for a lot of, it's for a lot of reasons. But for all of this, let me just say that the subcommittees will be meeting again all of next week. You, the boards, we, the boards, will see um the recommend, recommended recommendations. I think I'm true talking for the day. Recommendations, as Chris is saying, hopefully the first week of August. And then we hope everything gets out to the public. But um, this is, this is a very big deal. I personally am worried about the continuing risks. Some people are less worried about the idea of the virus hitting us hard here. I'm among those who's really, really, really cautious and want us to be as prepared as we possibly can be for every kind of eventuality. So that's it. You know, I, I am already getting comments. I want to acknowledge Kathy. Ciano, is that how you say your last name for sending me some great things in writing? Jessa West Clark sent a tremendous number of things. I've heard from Vanessa Stern and others. People are sending me things in writing that I'll incorporate, put into a memo for Chris and the task force. So uh, we're, we're all in this together. We all need to be thinking, get through together. And no concern is too small or too big. And no recommendation, too small or too big. Put it all out there so we can think this through and come up with the best solution for everybody. That's it from me, Jack, unless people have questions.
I just want to make a point that uh Lynn was among the people that got aced up by the technical issues as I understand it. I know that Melissa and I have day stuff that makes it very difficult to be effectively participating, but I am anticipating that, as I, you know, since this is clearly the best board in the, in the S U, that uh we will be uh thoughtful advocates and send ideas out uh wherever we can. Anyone else got questions here? I'm seeing no.
Chris would like to speak.
Oh, Chris, go. I'm sorry, Chris. This, this only, oh, this only goes uh so many lines across.
No, it's sometimes. It's fine.
No, 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 don't be sensitive on me.
So I just wanted to get back, it's back to approval for line of credit. I think what I would like to see, because it was, we didn't see it the minutes before, is just the board vote in approval of that.
Okay, let us vote to confirm the number. That's what we do and we think we've done it before. And that way there's no confusion. What was the dollar amount? You'll remind me, Chris.
What do you want?
Chris used to have been frozen. I don't know if he'd frozen and thought or just the panel.
I can say it's 475,000 was the number.
Was that no sense, no, you know, odd figures, just 475,000? This is a line of credit to an interest rate of 1. what percent?
Eight-five.
1.85%. And this is what bank again?
This is with Community Bank.
All right. Then I will, with the indulgence of my, of my board, step out of order and entertain a motion to confirm the W N U E S D apply for a line of credit not to exceed $475,000 at an interest rate of 1.85% at the community bank. So this would be to confirm our decision to authorize this application. Am I looking for somebody to do that?
No, move.
All right, I see Cheryl and Lynn move in second. And that would be great. All in favor, unless there's a question? Seeing none. Lynn, what say you? Aye or nay?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jessa?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
So I think I got everybody. Then we have now officially confirmed that we are authorized the administration to seek the line of credit of $475,000. Thank you on that. We good now?
I think I need to take a potty.
Sorry, does somebody speak?
Yeah, Teresa needs to put her stuff on mute.
You go, Teresa. We're good. Thank you. And put that young one to bed. If that's what you need to do. All right. So, oh, I see something that we didn't do and I'm not sure how we do this because I've forgotten. Josh, you still on the line? Yes, Josh. We've had Josh be our recording secretary for a number of years and we didn't authorize that. And I'm not sure who's taking notes tonight. So to relieve our clerk of that burden, we need, I believe we need to authorize Mr. Aberman to be our recording secretary. And I would entertain a motion to do that.
He says he's here, yeah.
All right. Josh, hold on just a second. Cheryl, could you take over for just a minute or so and I can hear what this is?
Sure. I'm not sure we need this motion, but I would be delighted to do it. Let me ask for a motion to request the services of a recording clerk. And we hope that that person can be Josh Aberman.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, if not, let me, I really am not sure about the protocol of this, but if nothing else, we'll consider this an affirmation of the value that Josh brings to this role and how much we appreciate him. So with that, I'll do the roll call. Lynn?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Jessa?
Yes.
Okay, it jacks away and I'll say yes. Okay. Now, it looks like the next topic, and I'm sure he'll be back soon, but it might be, maybe it's, oh, here he comes. Okay. We did approve the appointment of Josh as our recording clerk or whatever that is. And said, even if that's not the protocol, we just want to affirm how much we value him. So that was done and we voted.
That was Chris on the line. He is letting me know that whatever the internet glitches are that have been affecting many of us, just ate his internet connection tonight. And he just want to confirm that we take care of the appointments and the, oh God, he told me what it was else he was wanting me to make sure of. Oh, to change, we have to change signatures on accounts. And that is because Liz still has signatory authority in Grafton and Helen doesn't have any for Ath Grafton. We'll need to take that and add that onto new businesses. Actually, now.
That sounds good.
All right. So here it is. I need to get the board to authorize, to name Helen or to authorize Helen Richards Peels having signatory authority as principal of the Athens, Grafton Elementary School. And Liz Hardy to have the same authority at the Westminster School. Liz, you know what this is about? Is it anything significant I need to explain?
No.
Okay.
I understand.
So did I get a motion from somebody? I'd forgotten.
Sure.
Okay. See Cheryl, all in favor, say aye. All at once would take.
Aye.
There you go. Shortened that up. Done.
And then Chris. Good.
Oh, there you go. Chris, you missed it. We added a lot of stipulations that we'll tell you about later.
I think I managed to continue. I got, made the host when you left and I, at some point, managed to continue your recording to the cloud, which it did not specify which cloud.
It all worked. It's a miracle. All right.
I panicked. I thought the whole meeting just.
We're good. We did a lot of technical things involving your position that we'll tell you about some other day. But no worries.
I'm uncomfortable with that, Jack.
All right. Well, everybody can sign the paperwork. They're supposed to be able to sign. Eight appointments, if any, Desiree Wilbur as Grafton Elementary School nurse. Helen, this is yours, I'm guessing?
It is. She is a wonderful candidate. She has three years of experience as a school nurse. She was an assistant under a school nurse. And then the last five years, she's been working on her clinical skills, working at a clinic. So she's very enthusiastic, very excited, lives in Chester. And my understanding is that her husband was a student at Grafton Elementary School a few years back. So we're very excited to have her join us.
Excellent. Excellent. And I'm going to have these combined. Would you like to talk about Eileen Brown? Liz?
Yes, Eileen is coming to us from Kernhampton. She has 16 years school nurse experience at Kernhampton. We are thrilled to have her here. She has already been through the COVID experience at Kernhampton and is bringing a lot of knowledge and experience to our school. So we are so excited. And before that, I believe she was at the retreat. So she has lengthy experience as a school nurse and we are delighted that she has decided to join our team.
Excellent. Any commoner questions by anybody? I'm looking for a hand, not seeing one. And that means I can ask somebody to move to accept the appointment of Desiree Wilbur as school nurse for Grafton Elementary School and Eileen Brown as school nurse for the Westminster Community School.
So moved.
Lynn, you've got the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe we have unanimity. So we're down to director's comments. Before we do, I didn't know, there were a number of people from our community who had joined the meeting. Kathy and Mary Fader and others. And we didn't really give you a chance to say anything, but if you want to, this would be a time. Jessa, I'm muted. Start talking. I'm going to assume that means we have unanimity about what a great job we're doing. Director's comments. Let me start you off, Lynn.
Just want to thank everybody that's been working on this task for us. Going to be an amazing task to accomplish. And prayers are with everyone.
Cheryl?
I, whoa, boy. Let us all just visualize, pray if we choose to pray, that this be a positive, healthy, safe school year for all the children, all the teachers, all the support staff, everyone involved in our whole communities. May it be so.
Indeed. Jessa?
I, good luck to the task force. I think they're doing very well so far. I would just like to add, we did discuss at the beginning of the meeting the time and place for future board meetings. And while we left that virtual, I think if the children are expected to be in school at the beginning of September, then we cannot in good faith have remote board meetings saying that a group of us together is not safe. That's my feeling on that.
We noted, and thank you for that. We'll bring this up the next meeting. Melissa?
Yeah, I also want to wish good luck to the task force. It's a hard task. And I want to express my gratitude for everyone, all the other school directors who were all just starting our new terms again now, and the new principals that are now representing their schools. Thank you. And then at the bottom of the agenda, it says that the next meeting is August 20th. So if we've changed the time when we're meeting, we'll need to adjust that. And I'm wondering, the fourth Thursday lies on the 27th. And I don't know if that's too late for us to review what the school's doing to get ready. So I just wanted to draw attention to that.
Coming back at that.
Thank you, Jessa, for your comment. That's a really good point.
Yep. My only comment is that I did hear from many people in the three communities after we voted to pass our budget, voted to elect all of you. And the one consistent thing I heard was that how hard you all have worked and that that impressed people in some cases, led them to suspend their concerns because they have faith in all of you. I think that faith is well placed. And it's been a pleasure to work with you all and I anticipate we will continue the way that we have over the last couple of years during all the challenges we have faced. Now, executive session, if you have agenda items you would like to place on, you can send them to me and/or Chris. I encourage you to do that. The date of the next board meeting, based on the calendar, let me just pull this up because it would be the second, be second of Thursday in March. Somebody get a calendar because my little computer isn't telling me what the second Thursday in March is.
13th of August.
13th of August and it will be at 6:00 rather than at 6:30. And I do anticipate time and place of the meeting will be one of those issues among others that have been brought up tonight. And we will chat about that. And getting the, getting the, getting our various advisory folks either into that meeting or talking about how we're going to, would be items A and B, I think. I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's an objection. Gosh, didn't hear any for that. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Yeah, all in favor, turn off your computer.